It's nice to come right into the camera.
It's not on yet.
I love this track.
I don't know if it's on or not.
It should be.
She's right, I blinded it.
It is seven P M. I will call this meeting to order. Roll call has been taken. We have one member absent, but we still have a quorum. Could you please confirm compliance with the open meeting laws?
Yes, the meeting was properly noticed in accord with the open meeting law and required and noted the required notices for the public hearings listed on the agenda were posted, mailed and published in accord with statute code requirements.
Thank you. First item is the rezoning for Todd and Sarah Felton.
Okay, the property is located, it's known as Lot One C S M twenty-one ninety-seven and is located in part of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter, section six, Town of Herman, the site address being north seventy-one fifty-one, County Road A Y. Petition to rezone approximately two acres of land under the Town of Herman zoning ordinance from the A one farmland preservation zoning district to the R two general residential zoning district has been submitted by the Town of Herman Town Board to the Dodge County Board of Supervisors for approval in order to bring the zoning district map into compliance of the farmland preservation plan map and the future land use map for the Town of Herman. According to section sixty point six-two parent three of the Wisconsin statutes, in counties having a county zoning ordinance, no town zoning ordinance or amendment of a town zoning ordinance may be adopted under this section unless approved by the county board. The Land Resources and Parks Committee is responsible for reviewing the town rezoning amendment request and for recommending that the county board of supervisors approve or deny such petitions. The features of the property that relate to granting or denial of this rezoning petition are as follows: The lot to be rezoned is not located within the county zoning jurisdiction. Topography of the site is rolling with slopes ranging from six to eighteen percent. Land use on the site is a single-family residential. Land use in the area is agricultural, with scattered residences along County Road A Y. The site is not designated as an archaeological site. The proposal is consistent with the Dodge County Comprehensive Plan as the site is designated as single-family residential according to the county's future land use map. Staff advisory is as follows: The staff believes that the town board has followed the proper procedures outlined in their zoning ordinance in order to approve the rezoning request. In addition, the proposed rezoning petition is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan as the site is designated as single-family residential on the county's future land use map. Therefore, staff recommends the committee report favorably on the town rezoning petition.
Is the owner present? Okay, um, does the meeting have any questions? Okay, if there are none, then we will move on to conclusions of law.
Does the application contain sufficient information necessary to make a decision on the town rezoning petition?
Yes.
Is there sufficient evidence in the record to show that the town has followed the proper procedures in order to recommend approval of the town rezoning petition?
Yes. I will make a motion to submit a favorable recommendation to the county board regarding the town rezoning petition based upon previously mentioned by means.
A second.
Motion has been made by Mary in section nine Sam. If there are no further questions, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is a quick review of pending rezoning for Rick Bradts, agent for Richwood Real Estate L L C.
Okay, on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the committee held a public hearing on the rezoning request of Rick Bradts, agent for Richwood Real Estate L L C, to rezone approximately one and a half to two acres of land from the R one single-family residential zoning district to the C two extensive commercial zoning district under the Dodge County Land Use Code in order to allow for the transfer of this land to an adjacent landlord, which is intended to be used for a replacement area for the subjug system on this lot. The committee laid over a decision at the request of the Town of Shields Town Board to allow the town board additional time to review and provide a recommendation on the request. Section two-three-four J, approval by affected town boards. Approval of a rezoning petition by affected town boards shall occur pursuant to the procedure set forth in section two-point-two-point-one-five. The Land Use Code, the town board has submitted a recommendation to the department approving the rezoning petition. Staff advisory in this case is as follows: The staff has reviewed the petition for compliance with the approval criteria listed in section two-three-four I, and the staff comments are listed in Exhibit A for review by the committee. It is the staff's position that the committee will be able to make the findings necessary under section two-three-four I of the code in order to submit a favorable recommendation to the county board on this request.
Is the owner present? Come up to the front table and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Bradts.
Is there anything that you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Does the committee have any questions? All right, then we will move on to conclusion of law.
There are adequate facilities and services available to serve the subject property while maintaining adequate levels of service to its systems development.
Yes.
So provision of the local facilities to this project place unreasonable burden on the ability of effective local units of government to provide.
No.
Will the proposed development result in significant adverse impacts upon surrounding properties or natural environments?
No.
Will the development of this land cause unreasonable erosion or have unreasonable adverse effect on the area or any reasonable natural areas or something?
No.
Is the proposal consistent with Dodge County Comprehensive Plan and the county management administration plan and the stated purpose of this code?
Yes.
Will the proposal result in the use of two eyes or response on the county's 土地使用 structure?
No.
Is the proposed resulting with little action necessary to accomplish the intent of the petition?
Yes.
Has the town submitted a recommendation regarding this request?
Yes, a favorable recommendation.
Does the application contain sufficient information necessary to make a decision on the rezoning petition?
Yes.
Based upon the facts presented in the application and at the public hearing, does the committee believe that the criteria in section two-three-four I could be read from this proposal?
Yes.
I move to submit favorable recommendations to the county board of supervisors on this rezoning petition as proposed.
Second. Thank you. Thank you. A recommendation has been made, our motion has been made by Dan in second minute. If there are no further questions, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried. On the basis of the above findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the record in this rezoning matter, the committee shall provide a favorable recommendation to the county board on the rezoning petition as proposed. An ordinance shall also be drafted and perpetuating the recommendation of the committee in said ordinance shall be submitted to the board. So now it goes to the county board in the next last meeting. Do not have to present a document. The date, the date is?
Third Tuesday. Thursday.
Yeah, it was the nineteenth of September.
Okay. And we don't have to do that?
No. Thank you.
Okay, we have a series of three public hearings tonight, and the procedure for the hearings will be as follows: The committee chairman will read the public hearing notice, after which a report and recommendation that has been prepared by the county land resources and parks department staff will be read into the record regarding the requests before the committee. Following the staff report, the applicant or their agent will be asked to come before the committee. They should state their name for the record, and they'll have the opportunity to present their request to the committee and add any additional information to the record. Those in attendance wishing to speak in favor or opposition can also come before the committee and speak. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and state your position regarding the request before the committee. Please address your comments and questions to the committee and not the applicant. Because there are several public hearings tonight, you'll be limited to five minutes to make your statement or ask questions of the committee, and you will only be allowed to speak once, so please be prepared. After those in attendance have spoken, any written correspondence that has been received by the committee will be read into the record, and the committee will have the opportunity to ask the applicant any questions. Following the committee's questions, the applicant will be allowed to give a final statement for the record. After receiving all the testimony, the committee will then deliberate and will make the decision on the request before them. For the rezoning and code amendment petitions, the committee will make a recommendation on the petition, which will be forwarded to the county board supervisors. The final decision on the adoption of the rezoning petitions or the amendments will be made by the Dodge County Board of Supervisors at their next meeting. Appeals of the final decision of the county board of supervisors shall be made to the courts as provided by law. For the conditional use permit request, the committee will make the final decision on the request before them. A copy of the conditional use permit decision by the committee will be mailed to the applicant and the owner. Any person or persons agreed by the conditional use permit decisions made by this committee may file an appeal with the Land Resources and Parks Department within thirty days after the date of written notice of the decision of order of the committee. The county assumes no liability for and makes no warranty as to reliance on any decision if construction is commenced prior to the expiration date of this thirty-day period. In addition, if a conditional use permit is denied, the applicant may appeal the decision to the circuit court under the procedures contained in section fifty-nine point six-nine parent ten of the Wisconsin statutes. If during this meeting, any procedure questions or other points of order arise, or additional information on the request is requested by the committee, the final decision of this committee may be postponed until more information is gathered, considered, and properly acted.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee on Monday, August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven oh five P M or shortly thereafter, on the first floor, meeting rooms one H and one I of the Administration Building, Juneau, Wisconsin, on the petition of James Selker, agent for the James Selker Trust, to rezone approximately seven acres of land from the A one prime agricultural zoning district to the A two general agricultural zoning district to allow for the creation of a lot to be used for non-farm residential and commercial uses. The site is located in part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, section twenty-six, Town of Oak Grove. A copy of the proposed project is available for review in the County Land Resources and Parks Department between the hours of eight A M and four-thirty P M, Monday through Friday. All persons interested are invited to attend and be heard dated July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee, Mary Ballows, Chair.
Okay, a rezoning petition has been submitted by the applicant in order they be allowed to rezone approximately seven acres of land from the A one prime agricultural zoning district to the A two general agricultural zoning district to allow for the creation of a lot to be used for non-farm residential and commercial uses. Land use code provisions in this case are as follows: Subsections two-three-four A through two-three-four J of the code details procedure matters, the approval criteria, and the form for the petition. The committee must hold a public hearing and report to the county board. The role of the town boards in the process is also outlined in this section. Subsection two-three-four B states that a petition for rezoning may be made by any property owner in the area to be affected by the rezoning. The purpose of the A one prime agricultural district is to promote areas for uses of a generally exclusive agricultural nature in order to protect farmland, to allow participation in the state's farmland preservation program, and to accommodate the community practices in the agricultural industry subject to the appropriate standards. And the purpose of the A two general agricultural district is to promote areas for agriculture which are transitional, allowing for an expansion of urban areas, limit the rural residential development, and the conversion of agricultural land to other related uses subject to the appropriate standards. The features of the proposed construction and property that relate to this rezoning request are as follows: The county has zoning jurisdiction over the site as the Town of Oak Grove has adopted the county's land use code. A one-hundred-and-one acre parent lot is located within the A one prime agricultural zoning district. The proposed lots are not located within the county shoreline or flood plain jurisdiction. Again, the applicant is proposing to create a seven-acre and a ninety-four-acre lot at this location. The seven-acre lot will contain an existing residence and accessory buildings. The applicant intends to use the seven-acre lot for non-farm residential use, for commercial boat and R V storage, and for online computer and in-person retail sales on this lot. The remaining ninety-four acres will remain in agricultural use at this time. Table three-six dash one of the code identifies a single-family residence as an allowed use within the A two general agricultural zoning district. Table three point six dash one of the county land use code also identifies storage facilities and general retail sales and services as a conditional use within the A two general agricultural zoning district. Topography of this site is rolling, the slopes ranging from zero to eighteen percent. Land use on the site is currently residential and agricultural. Land use in the area is agricultural, with scattered residences along County Road D J. The site is not designated as an archaeological site. For density standards, the base farm tract for this property contains one-hundred-and-one acres within the A one prime agricultural zoning district. The code will allow a maximum of four-point-eight acres for non-farm residential use under the conditional use permit process. Therefore, in this case, rezoning is required to allow for the creation of a seven-acre non-farm residential lot at this location. The town has submitted an approval for the, for the request. Staff advisory is as follows: Staff has reviewed the petition for compliance with the approval criteria listed in section two-three-four I of the code and with chapter ninety-one point four eight of the Wisconsin state statutes. Staff comments are listed in Exhibit A for the committee's review. The staff points out that the rezoning petition is only one step in the process of obtaining the required approvals that are necessary to establish a commercial, retail, and storage facility used on this proposed lot. If the applicant is successful in obtaining approval to rezone the seven acres into the A two general agricultural zoning district, they will also be required to obtain a conditional use permit to allow for the establishment of the storage and retail business use on this seven-acre lot. Approval of the conditional use permit requires a public hearing be held and requires separate review approved by the committee. Approval of the conditional use permit is not carried. The staff believes that the committee will be able to make findings necessary under section two-three-four I of the code and chapter ninety-one point four eight of the Wisconsin state statutes in order to submit a favorable recommendation to the county board for this rezoning proposal.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Step up to this front table and state your name for the record.
James Selker.
Is there anything that you would like to add at this time?
No.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this request? One last time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this? Hearing none? Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak against? Anyone in attendance that would like to speak against? One last time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak against this request? Hearing none? Does the committee have any questions?
Nothing here.
Do you want to add more questions?
No.
Nothing that you want to add? Okay, if there is nothing, then I will close the public hearing portion and move on to conclusion of law.
As adequate public facilities and services available to serve the subject property while maintaining adequate levels of service to the existing locals?
Yes.
Will the provision of public facilities to this project place unreasonable burden on the ability of the effective local units of government to provide? Will the proposed development result in significant adverse impacts upon surrounding properties or the natural environment?
No.
Will the development of this land cause unreasonable soil erosion or have unreasonable adverse effect on rare or irreplaceable natural areas?
No.
Is the proposal consistent with the Dodge County Comprehensive Plan and farmland preservation plan and the stated purpose of this code?
Yes.
Will the proposed rezoning be used to legitimize or spotzone a non-conforming use or structure?
No.
Is the proposed rezoning the minimum actually necessary to accomplish an intent of the petition?
Yes.
Does the committee believe that the land to be rezoned has been reserved for residential use or agricultural use?
Residential.
Is the rezoning petition substantially consistent with the Dodge County Comprehensive Plan and Farmland Preservation Plan?
Yes.
Will the rezoning substantially impair or limit current or future agricultural use of surrounding parts of the land that are sold or legally restricted to agricultural use? Has the town submitted a recommendation regarding this request?
Yes, favorable.
Does the application contain sufficient information necessary to make a decision on the rezoning petition?
Yes.
Based upon the facts presented in the application and at the public hearing, does the committee believe that the criteria in section two-three-four I can be matched for this proposal?
Yes.
I move to submit a favorable recommendation to the county board of supervisors on the rezoning petition as proposed.
Thank you. And I will second. Motion has been made by Dan, seconded by Mary. If there are no other questions, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried. On the basis of the above findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the record in this rezoning matter, the committee shall provide a favorable recommendation to the county board on the rezoning petition as proposed. An ordinance shall also be drafted and factuating the recommendation of the committee, and said ordinance shall be submitted to the board. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee on Monday, August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven fifteen P M or shortly thereafter, on the first floor, meeting rooms one H and one I of the Administration Building, Juneau, Wisconsin, on the petition of Keller, an agent for Red Bud City Properties L L C, for a conditional use permit under the land use code Dodge County, Wisconsin, to bring the existing Columbus Chemical Industries chemical manufacturing production facility into compliance with the code in order to allow for the addition of a receiving and load-out dock area on this facility. The property is located in part of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, section seven, Town of Elba. The site address being N four-three-three-five, N four-three-oh-one, N four-three-one-five, and N four-three-four-one, Tampin Road. A copy of the proposed project is available for review in the County Land Resources and Parks Department between the hours of eight A M and four-thirty P M, Monday through Friday. All persons interested are invited to attend and be heard. Written comments may be sent to the Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Department at one-twenty-seven East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, five-three-oh-three-nine, or by email, no later than August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, dated July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee, Mary Ballows, Chair.
Okay, an application for a county conditional use permit under the Dodge County Land Use Code was made by the applicant in order to bring the existing Columbus Chemical Industries chemical manufacturing production facility into compliance with the code to allow for the addition of a receiving and load-out dock area on this facility. Columbus Chemicals Industry Incorporated is a world-class supplier of high-purity chemical products and custom-engineered solutions. It processes and packages high-purity and ultra-pure chemicals, specializing in acids, dyes, and dilutions. They also package a very broad range of inorganic salts and other chemicals. Their state-of-the-art warehouses in Columbus, Wisconsin, and Phoenix, Arizona, are licensed to store a wide range of hazardous materials, including flammable, corrosive acids and dyes. Columbus Chemical will be constructing an approximate thirty-one foot four-inch by fifty-two-foot receiving load-out building, which is approximately sixteen hundred and twelve square feet, with three loading docks, docks along the east side of the current facility. The use of the addition will be the loading and unloading of product already produced within the existing facility. Due to the nature of Columbus Chemical Industries' products, there will be containment designed per code within the dock pit to properly collect any spill that may occur. Currently, Columbus Chemicals has fifty-four full-time employees. Twenty-three employees work from six A M to three P M, Monday through Thursday, and six A M to ten A M, Fridays. Twenty-eight employees work from seven A M to four P M, Monday through Thursday, and seven A M to eleven A M on Fridays. Three employees work from eleven P M to eight A M, Sunday through Wednesday, and five P M to nine P M on Fridays. There are seventy-four parking spaces available. There are approximately twenty-eight to thirty-one parking spaces utilized on any given shift. The hours of operation, Monday through Friday, six A M to five P M. Three employees work from eleven P M to eight A M on Sunday and through Wednesday, and five P M to nine P M on Fridays. Outside lighting will include wall pack lights on the east side of the building. The north facade will also have a few wall pack lights to illuminate the dock area. The state-of-the-art warehouses are licensed to store a wide range of hazardous materials, including flammable, corrosives, acids, and dyes. Columbus Chemical Industries undergoes regular audits and inspections from local, state, and federal licensing agencies and their customers. C C I maintains a hazmat team of twelve employees, and every team member has received the required hazwafer training for hazardous substances removal. If a significant incident happens that is beyond the scope of the internal hazmat team, aid will be sought from professional hazmat response services. There have been no incidents from which outside assistance was needed for the past five years. The facility is served with an E S F R sprinkler system, and the flammable area has an A R A F F F. The facility is served with an ESFR sprinkler system, and the flammable area has an AR AFFF foam system. The warehouse is completely contained and designed to hold both historic chemicals and fire suppression system water. Storm drains are separate and are covered in a WD, a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, no exposure certification. The county has zoning jurisdiction over this site as the Town of Elba has adopted the county's land use code. For review criteria, subsections 236A to 236H in the code details the procedure matters, the approval criteria, and the form for the conditional use permit application. The committee shall authorize the land use administrator to issue a conditional use permit for conditional uses after review and a public hearing, provided that such conditional uses or structures are found to be in accordance with the purpose and intent of this code and the approval criteria provided in section 236F, and are found not to be hazardous, harmful, offensive, or otherwise adverse to the environment or the value of the area. Section 3.6 and Table 3.6-1 of the code identifies manufacturing of hazardous materials as a conditional use in the I-2 industrial zoning district. The purpose of the I-2 industrial district is to promote areas for manufacturing and other industrial or non-industrial uses which may produce smoke, odors, noise, health hazards, traffic congestion, or might otherwise be considered offensive by a significant portion of the population, subject to appropriate standards. The features of the proposed construction and property that relate to granting or denial of a conditional use permit are as follows. The county has zoning jurisdiction over this site as the Town of Elba has adopted the county's land use code, and the site is located within the I-2 industrial zoning district. The lot is not located within the county shoreline or floodplain jurisdiction. The county considers the existing chemical manufacturing and warehouse business as a legally existing nonconforming manufacturing business as a use of the property existed prior to the adoption of the county's code in 2015. Section 10.2.1 of the code allows a nonconforming use of a structure, land, or water existing at the time of the adoption or amendment of the code to continue, although the use does not conform with the provisions of this code. However, only the portion of the structure, land, or water in actual use may be so continued, and the structure, land, or water or area within them which the use is contained may not be extended, enlarged, modified, added to, repaired, reconstructed, substituted, moved, or structurally altered, except when required to do so by law or order so as to comply with the provisions of this code or in accord with section 10.2.4. The applicant has submitted the conditional use permit to bring the use of the property into compliance with the court in order they be allowed to construct the new loading dock along the east side of the facility. Topography of the 6.9 acre site is rolling, with slopes ranging from 0 to 6%. Land use on the site is a chemical manufacturing and warehouse business. Land use in the area is a mixture of commercial retail businesses, chemical manufacturing, autoing equipment sales and service, self-service storage businesses, and residences. The site is not designated as an archeological site. The town has recommended approval of the request for chapter eight review of the development standards according to section 8.1.4b of the code. The committee will waive any or all of the other requirements of this chapter, which is chapter eight, not including the filling, grading, lagooning, or dredging regulations if the committee determines that the site or activity in question will have no appreciable off-site impact, that compliance with the requirements is impractical or impossible due to site conditions or other circumstances beyond the control of the applicant, or the specific requirement is not necessary for a particular site to ensure compliance with the requirements of this chapter. For off-street parking, section 8.2.2a of the code requires a minimum of one off-street parking space per each employee on each shifts, plus one additional space per each company vehicle. There are 54 full-time employees with a maximum of 31 employees per peak shift. The code requires a minimum of 31 off-street parking spaces with a minimum of two handicap spaces. There are currently 74 off-street parking spaces available. Existing off-street parking at this location complies with the code. Such in 8.5 of the code lists the operational compatibility standards in the code including, but not limited to, noise, layer, refuse collection, hours of operation, ventilation, and control orders, et cetera, odors. The operation of the facility will be required to comply with the operational compatibility standards listed in the code. The new loading dock will be required to be designed in accordance with the operational compatibility standards listed in section 8.5 of the code, and the applicant will be required to submit detailed building and site design plans to this department for review and approval prior to the approval of the land use permit for the construction of the loading dock facility. Copy of plans were submitted to the county today. Landscaping and buffering for section 8.6 of the code lists the landscaping and buffering requirements for non-residential buildings. According to the code, one tree and five shrubs are required for buffering and/or visual screening for every 500 square feet of appropriate surface area. Landscaping is generally placed along public roads and abutting property lines unless the adjacent properties have similar uses. There is approximately 182,155 square feet of existing and previous surface area at this location. The code therefore requires a total of 364 trees and 1,822 shrubs to be used to meet the landscaping requirements for this site. According to the application, approximately five trees and shrubs will be removed from a long toner road to accommodate a larger entrance to the new loading dock area. There are no plans at this time to replace the five trees that will be removed. This site contains existing mature trees along the northwest side of the facility, along the property boundaries, and contains trees and shrubs along the southeast and west sides of the facility. There are limited open space areas on this slot in which to locate additional trees and/or shrubs on the site. It is the staff's position that compliance of the landscaping and buffering requirement would be impractical or impossible due to the minimal existing suitable planting areas available on this site. A waiver to this requirement may be required. In for screen requirements for the parking area, all off-street parking areas serving non-residential uses and containing five or more spaces shall be screened from view of all adjacent residential districts by a solid decorative wall made of concrete wood or masonry. The fence or wall shall have a maximum height of six feet, except that the height of the wall adjoining the required front setback in a residential district shall not exceed 32 inches. Required landscape operators shall be located on the outside of the fence or wall. The parking area along the northwest side of the building is partially screened from the residences along the north side of the facility by existing trees. Compliance with the screening requirement could be improved by use of fencing or additional tree plantings in the open spaces along the property line if it is deemed necessary to improve the screening at this location. Waiver to the screening required may be required, no fencing will be required. For lighting, such in 8.8 of the code lists the lighting standards. According to the code, exterior lighting shall meet the functional and security needs of the subject development in a way that does not adversely affect the adjacent properties of the neighborhood. Outside lighting will include wall pack lights on the east side of the building. The north facade will also have a wall pack lights to illuminate the dock area. The applicant will be required to submit lighting plans to this department in accord with section 8.8 of the code for review and approval prior to approval of a conditional use permit and the land use permit for this facility. Staff advisories as follows. Staff has reviewed the proposal for compliance of the criteria listed in section 236F of the code. Staff comments are listed in exhibit A for review by the committee. The staff points out that the property does not comply with the landscaping and screening requirements of the code. However, it is the staff's position that compliance with these standards would be impractical or impossible due to the minimal existing suitable planting areas available on this site. A waiver to these requirements may be required. If the committee can make the findings necessary under section 236F of the code and are required to approve the conditional use permit for this project, the staff recommends the following conditions and waivers. For conditions, the business operation shall be conducted without offensive noise, vibration, dust, smoke, odor, glare, lighting, or the risk of fire, explosion, or other accident, and shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the immediate neighborhood or the community. Two, all federal, state, county, and local municipality permits and approvals shall be obtained for the proposed chemical processing, storage, and distribution facilities on this site. All exterior lighting plans shall meet the functional and security needs of the proposed development without adversely affecting the adjacent properties of the community. Four, any significant change or expansion of the facilities on this site may require that a new conditional use permit be obtained. Five, the business shall have adequate and code-compliant sanitary accommodations to serve the employees and the customers of the facility. Six, the applicant shall obtain a county land use permit for all construction projects for this site. Seven, all hazardous waste used in the operation of business shall be stored, handled, and disposed of in accord with the applicable regulations. Eight, any significant change to or expansion of the business operation and/or its facilities may require that a new conditional use permit be obtained. Nine, the decision of the committee shall expire one year after the decisions filed with the department unless construction has been diligently pursued, a certificate of zoning compliance has been issued, the use is established, or the conditional use permit is renewed for a period not to exceed one year. Ten, the conditional use permit shall also expire upon termination of the project or the rights granted by the permit or discontinued for 180 consecutive days. Waivers would be to section 8.6.5, the landscaping requirements, and section 8.68, the screening requirements.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to come to the front table and please state your name for the record?
Scott Lawson with Keller.
Is there anything that you'd like to add at this time?
I don't think so. You guys actually covered what was the comments that we received, so we did receive town approval four weeks ago. We did submit the state-approved DSPS on construction plans today, so that would be a response to one of the comments in the letter. And that's it, really.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this? Microphone and state your name for the record.
Nathan Palomo, Town of Elba Chair. Just want to know how good of corporate neighbors Columbus Chemical has been. They're good partners, they're good people around town. They employ people, they don't make noise, they don't make waves. They're just really nice to have around. As far as tax base, they're the kind of partner I hope every town has and more of.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this?
Name is Richard Shear. I'm the managing member of Red Bud City Properties, the owner of the property in which the facility was located. And the business out there was started back in the 1970s, and it's grown and added numerous employees and benefits of the tax base. And I am happy to have them as partners in this operation. The company supplies chemistry that's used to manufacture semiconductor wafers, cleaning of heart stents, and other products used in the biotech industry. And that's an industry that we hopefully can grow in this area of the state and add additional tax base to ownership as well as Dodge County. Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this? One last time, anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak against this request? Anyone in attendance that wishes to speak against this request? One last time, is there anyone in attendance that wishes to speak against this request? Hearing none? Does the committee have any questions?
Nothing here.
Has there been any reports on this?
No.
Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
I don't believe so.
All right. With that being said, I will close the public hearing portion of this and move on to conclusions of law.
Is the project compatible with adjacent uses in terms of scale, site design, and operating characteristics?
Yes.
Will the proposed be significantly addressed in terms of health, safety, and welfare?
No.
Could the project cause substantial decrease in the value of other property in the neighborhood and then should it be located?
No.
Will there be any significant adverse effects on the natural environment that require mitigation?
No.
Is the project located in a hazard areas?
No.
According to the section 8.1 of the code, the committee may waive the period of all the requirements of chapter eight, not including the filling, grading, lagooning, or dredging regulations if the committee determines that the site or activity in question has a known or initial off-site impact. Compliance with the requirements is impractical or impossible due to site conditions or other circumstances beyond the control of the applicant. If the requirement is not necessary for a particular site to ensure compliance with the requirements of this chapter.
Do you guys want to approve the waivers?
I do.
Are you? So I'll see, yes.
Does the proposed project comply with all applicable provisions of this code?
Yes.
Are there any conditions for approval needed in this case to mitigate any potential adverse effects on adjacent properties of the environment or the community?
There are ten, and the two waivers that we have agreed to waive.
Does the proposed project comply with all applicable provisions of this code?
Yes.
Are there any conditions for approval needed in this case to mitigate any potential adverse effects on adjacent properties of the environment or the community?
There are ten, and the two waivers that we have agreed to waive.
Those may believe the conditional use permit requests and approval criteria in section 236F of the county land use code.
Yes. I will make a motion to approve the conditional use permit request based upon the previously mentioned findings, conditions, and waivers.
I'll say it.
Motion has been made by Mary and seconded by Dan. There are no further questions. I will call the vote. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion is carried. On the basis of the above findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the record in this matter, the committee granted the preliminary approval of the conditional use permit subject to the conditions listed above, and the land use administrator is directed to issue a conditional use permit incorporating the decisions of this committee. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee on Monday, August 28, 23.
Do you have to memorize?
No, but it says 7:05.
Well, it was supposed to say 7:30.
August 28, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. or shortly thereafter, on the first floor meeting rooms one H and one I of the administration building, Juneau, Wisconsin, on the petition of the Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee to amend the text of the floodplain zoning ordinance Dodge County, Wisconsin, and to adopt the dam failure analysis and the hydraulic shadow maps for the Carston Number Two Dam. The Carston Number Two Dam is located in part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, Section 11, Town of Hubbard. The site address being N 6615, State Road 67, Ian Ridge, Wisconsin, 53035. The purpose of the proposed amendments to the text of the floodplain zoning ordinance is to promote and protect life, health, and property in the floodplain areas of Dodge County by regulating the uses of structures that are permitted with County by regulating the uses and structures that are permitted within the mapped floodplains. The petition is also intended to adapt the dam failure analysis and hydraulic shadow maps for the Carston Number Two Dam in order to create new floodplain inundation boundary lines for the areas located downstream of the dam. Any future development which occurs within these boundaries will be required to comply with the floodplain zoning ordinances regulation. Proposed changes to the floodplain zoning ordinance and the floodplain maps will bring the Dodge County floodplain zoning regulations into compliance with the current minimum floodplain standards that are required by state and federal law. A copy of the proposed amendment is available for review in the county land resources and parks department between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. All persons interested are invited to attend and be heard. Written comments may be sent to the Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Department at 127 East Oak Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, 53039, or by email, no later than August 25, 2023. Date of July 27, 2023, Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee, Mary Bottles, Chair.
Okay, a petition has been filed by the Dodge County Land Resources and Parks Committee to amend the text of the Dodge County floodplain zoning ordinance and to adopt a dam failure analysis and hydraulic shadow maps for the Carston Number Two Dam. The Carston Number Two Dam is located in part of the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, Section 11, Town of Hubbard, site address being North 6615, State Road 67, Iron Ridge, Wisconsin, 53035. The purpose of the proposed text amendments to the floodplain zoning ordinance is to promote and protect life, health, and property in the floodplain areas of Dodge County by regulating the uses and structures that are permitted within the mapped floodplains. The purpose of adoption of the dam failure analysis and hydraulic shadow maps for the Carston Number Two Dam is to create a new floodplain inundation boundary line for the areas located downstream of the dam. Any future development which occurs within these boundaries will be required to comply with the floodplain zoning ordinance regulations. The proposed changes to the floodplain zoning ordinance and the floodplain maps will bring the Dodge County floodplain zoning regulations into compliance with the current minimum floodplain standards that are required by state and federal law. For project details, the department has received notice from the State Department of Natural Resources that the DNR recently approved a dam failure analysis for the Carston Number Two Dam on March 16, 2023. Again, the dam is located across Oliver Creek and is located on parcel 022-1116-1144-000 in part of the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, Section 11, Town of Hubbard, site address being North 6615, State Road 67, Iron Ridge, Wisconsin, 53035. The dam is currently owned by Clear Creek Land and Cattle Company, LLC. Based on the results of the approved DNR study, the areas of potential dam failure inundation are shown on the maps on the screen. The Carston Number Two Dam was given a hazard rating of high hazard. A dam failure analysis is required for all large dams under the Wisconsin Administrative Code, Chapter NR 333. Dam failure analysis studies are also are required to be performed by an engineer registered in the state of Wisconsin and are required to be approved by the DNR in accord with Chapter 31 of the Wisconsin statutes, Chapter NR 333 and NR 116 of the Wisconsin Administrative Codes. The analysis is used for the following purposes: to identify the inundation area or the extent of the dam failure floodplain hydraulic shadow for the dam if it were to fail; to determine the dam's hazard rating based on the affected development downstream; to determine the design's spillway capacity requirements for the structure; and to utilize the information to determine downstream land use controls that must be implemented to protect the public and to develop and implement a detailed emergency action plan for the dam. Under the requirements of Chapter 87.30 Wisconsin statutes and Chapter NR 116.05 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code, the county is required to adopt the dam failure analysis, the floodway data tables, and the flood profile data within six months of the date of DNR approval, which was March 16, 2023. The statute also mandates the county to adopt and enforce a reasonable and effective floodplain ordinance. The state has developed the 2022 model floodplain ordinance, which contains a minimum required standards of NR 116 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code and 44 Code of Federal Regulations, CFR 59 to 72. The county was notified by the State Department of Natural Resources that the county is required to update the text of the county floodplain ordinance along with the dam failure analysis in order to meet the current minimum standards of NR 116 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code. Adoption and enforcement of the minimum federal standards entitled 44 Code of Federal Regulations, CFR 59 to 72, will allow the county to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program is a program created by the Congress of the United States in 1968 through the National Flood Insurance Act of 1968. The National Flood Insurance Program has two purposes: to share the risk of flood losses through flood insurance and to reduce flood damages by restricting floodplain development. The program enables property owners in participating communities to purchase insurance protection administered by the government against losses from flooding and requires flood insurance for all loans or lines of credit that are secured by the existing buildings, manufactured homes, or buildings under construction that are located in the special flood hazard area in a community that participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. U.S. Congress limits the availability of the National Flood Insurance to communities that adopt adequate land use and control measures with effective enforcement provisions to reduce flood damages by restricting development areas exposed to flooding. The proposed petition to amend the floodplain ordinance is based on the 2022 model floodplain ordinance that was developed by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. The ordinance, as modified, will contain the minimum regulatory standards required in Chapter NR 116 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code and those of the National Flood Insurance Program. The adoption of the ordinance, as modified, will bring the text of the ordinance into compliance with the state and federal codes and will allow the county to continue to participate in federal FEMA National Flood Insurance Program. The proposed changes to the text of the flood ordinance include the use of the term "special flood hazard areas" to replace the term "floodplain district." The adoption of the dam failure analysis and hydraulic shadow maps for the Carston Number Two Dam, the incorporation of the floodplain maps currently located in the flood study appendix of the Dodge County floodplain ordinance into the official map section of the ordinance, which is Section 1.52B. A series of modifications have been made to the text of the ordinance in order to clarify the regulatory requirements of the ordinance. Definitions of terms that are used in the ordinance were added or clarified in the definition section of the ordinance. And the model ordinance has two optional provisions that a local community can adopt. Page 6, 2017 Wisconsin Act 115, there's a local exemption for lands that are adjacent to non-navigable farm drainage ditches that are under the jurisdiction of a drainage district. This exemption is a part of Wisconsin State Statutes 87.30, 1MAG and AM. However, the text does not appear within the state model ordinance. This exemption allows for the disposal of spoil material that is removed from a non-navigable farm drainage ditch during normal maintenance of the ditch into a designated floodplain area when said spoil material is placed within the drainage district corridor and where the adjacent lands are used for non-structural agricultural use or other non-structural use, except as required to maintain eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program. On page 29 to 32, Section 6.12 H4, the committee has an option to adopt these provisions if they want to implement Act 175. Act 175 was enacted in March of 2020 and created Section 87.30, 1DD, Wisconsin statutes. Federal requirements are unchanged by this act. However, this option would create an exception to the state's 50% rule for structures that are located in the floodplain. Dodge County currently does not have this exception in the current floodplain ordinance. Under current code requirements, no modification or addition is allowed to any non-conforming structure or any structure with a non-conforming use, which over the life of the structure would equal or exceed 50% of its present equalized assessed value unless the entire structure is permanently changed to a conforming structure and the non-conforming use is brought into compliance with applicable requirements. For ordinances without these provisions, the repair, maintenance, and modification of structures in the floodplain is limited by the 50% rule without exception, which may result in the removal of the structure in use from the floodplain. If these provisions are adopted into the ordinance, the committee could allow an existing structure with a non-conforming use to remain within the floodplain regardless of the cost of modification or repair, provided that the structure is brought into compliance with the code. Floodplain zoning ordinance provisions in this case are as follows. Subsection 8.2 of the Dodge County floodplain zoning ordinance states that a petition for the amendment of the ordinance may be made upon petition of any interest party according to the provisions of Section 59.69 of the Wisconsin statutes. Subsections 8.21 through 8.23 of the ordinance details procedure matters for the petition. The committee must hold a public hearing and report a recommendation to the county board, which shall approve or disapprove the proposed amendment. In accord with Section 8.22, no amendments shall become effective until reviewed and approved by the Department of Natural Resources. For state statute and administrative code requirements, in accord with NR 116.05 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code, county is required to adopt and upgrade the floodplain ordinance within six months from the time any of the information listed below is made available to the municipality by the department. The municipality shall upgrade its floodplain zoning ordinance using the amendment procedure in Section NR 116.21 to reflect current floodplain information, including but not limited to the following: changes in floodplain management statutes, changes in floodplain management rules, changes in floodplain management case law, new study data, or improved technical information and methods. Copy of the proposed ordinance amendments has been submitted to the DNR floodplain program manager for review and a recommendation. As of this date of the hearing, the county has not received a recommendation from the DNR. For staff comments, if there are specific questions at this hearing, on any of the proposed amendments in this petition, we can provide specific discussion on the code section and language and question. For staff advisory, the proposed amendments to the text of the Dodge County floodplain ordinance are based on the 2022 state model floodplain ordinance that was developed by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and represents the minimum regulatory standards required in Chapter NR 116 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code and those of the National Flood Insurance Program. The proposed amendment also includes the dam failure maps and analysis for the Carston Number Two Dam, which was approved by the DNR on March 16, 2023. It is a staff's position that the proposed amendments are consistent with the Dodge County Comprehensive Plan and the stated purposes of the ordinance. It is also the staff's position that the proposed changes to the floodplain ordinance are necessary in order to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and the proposed amendments are necessary in order to bring the county's floodplain zoning regulations into compliance with the minimum state and federal regulations. Staff therefore recommends a committee report favorably under the proposed petition.
So you don't call anybody out?
You've asked for public comment, yes. But there would be no specific calling, yes.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance change? Anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor?
I'm Daniel Hibburg, Town Chair for Town of Hubbard, where the dam is in. And the, looking at it, I see that there is probably two properties. The ordinances that you were talking about there, Joe, are they, what would trigger the amount of water that needed to escape to cause the type of flooding that you're talking about here?
If the dam were to completely fail, the areas in the red would be inundated by the flood caused by the dam being released.
Okay, the updates on the ordinances, I fail to look at what the changes would be. What would trigger those? Would it be a complete failure of the dam that would trigger that?
No, this, if the amendment is approved, we would establish floodplain, a new floodplain boundary around the red areas, which would restrict any future construction of buildings in those areas unless they're in compliance with the floodplain ordinance. Right now, there is no floodplain in that area, but if this were to be approved, that would be the new floodplain boundaries for those properties.
Okay. So then, would they become part of the shoreland zoning?
They would be floodplain ordinance. Floodplain order, it's going to be a new floodplain district.
Okay, okay. Even if, you know, the majority of that property that are in the red flood area that is in drainage district, most of it?
Doesn't.
Doesn't matter?
Doesn't play into floodplain part of it, no.
Okay. I know a five-inch rain event can trigger that type of water, and I've witnessed that already, but that was before the dam was repaired. And it supposedly now has been brought back to where it was before. That's all I've got.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this? One last time, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this?
I'm not in favor of anything, but I would like to speak. My name is Adam Breach, 2007.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak against this?
My name is Chris Hookstead, and I own the majority of that property that you turned in red, okay? But the only thing I'm concerned about is how are you going to address the damage in which and when that dam would be breached? How does it, what can the county do to ensure if the dam is breached, that people in that section are reasonably compensated for the damage that water does? Not the initial rain, whatever the flood that harmed it. What can the county do for them, landlords?
So correct me if I'm wrong, it's really not that the county is going to reimburse or do anything. It's that the DNR is telling us to do this, and if it isn't brought up to the DNR standards, you can't get insurance, floodplain insurance, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
So it's not, it's that you can't build unless you're in compliance, and you also at that time can purchase flood insurance that would help you if something in the dam were to be compromised. It's, we have our hands basically tied where we have to abide by what the DNR and get our codes up to...
That's not what I'm asking.
So in essence, that's what this is doing, is that it's limiting what kind of improvements can go into those red areas so that you don't have that. of improvements can go into those red areas so that you don't have that, that damage to properties.
Oh, but it's different with you.
So. If the land on there is planted to be pro-crop, you may have six, seven, eleven hundred dollars invested per acre, and nobody here can, has the power to see that there is a, some type of insurance for the people downstream, because we didn't cause it, we just want to be made whole if it happens.
Right, and this is affecting just buildings so that we don't put buildings in that, that area?
Yeah, that's fine, but I think the step has to be taken from here is to either we should put some type of, something in, where as long as that pond exists, that he would have to be able to cover either a bond to protect that, that downstream's damage. Now, there's going to be damage, if you have a breach of that, there'll be damage all the way down that hole from culverts being washed out, driveways being, you know, field driveways being disturbed, and that's all going to be after we're repaired. So I understand, rain is a rain, it happens, but somehow we have to, you brought it up, we have to decide how we're going to protect the downstream people. It may not be your responsibility, but we have to go in a direction to make it so that it gets done, or at least help us get it done.
Sir, have you talked to the county, to your town board about this yet?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, I recommend started there.
I just did.
Yeah, that's what you have to, at a meeting, let them discuss it and see where it goes. And there is crop insurance, I'm sure, too. Crop insurance, you can take out crop insurance, maybe? I mean, check into a lot of things.
Well.
So that's, the county can't do anything?
I understand, I can take crop insurance, but I have to pay for it then, for a flood.
Yeah, so start with your town board and see what's.
Start there?
Yeah.
And it's just something, I don't know if the owner's been notified of this situation or not, I don't know, I have no idea, but I'll learn more about it next time.
Okay.
Y'all take care.
You too.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak against this?
Lloyd Hildendorf, chairman for town through S. I'm not particularly against this particular floodplain, we have floodplains in other parts of the township. I'd like to make a statement, I think there's too much regulation against the farmers in particular, which we are at that table, as far as digging ditches, cleaning ditches, and removing the, removing the dirt and having to haul it a half mile away or a mile away, the dirt washed into those drainage ditches from right there where the lowlands are, and it's very much of an inconvenience and expense to haul that dirt to great distances. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I think the DNR has, in conjunction with county here, has too much power regulating the, the, things like this, and I understand about the insurance not being available and things like that for buildings and houses if it's not in compliance, but somebody has to write these, somebody has to write these nineteen, these twenty-twenty-two models for the state model ordinance. I don't know who these people are, but I, I think, I think they're putting a lot of pressure on citizens, farmers, people like you and Joe Eagle and Dale Elmbeck, they're getting a lot of pressure put on them, and I don't think it's right. I just want to make that statement.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak against this? One last time, is there anyone else that would like to speak against this? None, what does the committee?
I have some questions, concerns, I can bring that over now. Because we are all aware that there's a high level of concern about Dodge County's population went down, aging of Dodge County's population, and the younger people aren't staying. I think we have to rethink how we're treating our residents. It's almost like we have a rope around our neck and we're always tightening it up a little bit more, and I just have some examples in here that I'd like you to consider. Just in one point five, general provisions, we're adding in yellow there, that section, the last sentence states, "If more than one map or revision is referenced, the most restrictive information shall apply." That's not even in the DNR model, they don't require that, that's something that someone else has inserted here, not the DNR, I don't know if it's in the state or what, I don't know if the state has it.
Okay, Mary, what did you?
This is section one point five. I have an older copy here, so mine's page five at nineteen page eight on there or something. There's like three pages off, section one point five. So I believe if there are two studies that are qualified to say a certain thing about a certain subject, why are we taking the most restrictive study and slapping that on our residents? If they're both legit, let's take the least restrictive one, and let's start loosening that rope a little bit, and seeing that this isn't even in the DNR model of minimum requirements, let's just get rid of the whole sentence right off the bat. So that's the kind of thing that I believe is, is, is hampering Dodge County, we are just getting more regulatory, more regulation, and it's just more pressure on the citizens, and we're here for the citizens and we have to do something about that. So if that sentence is supposed to stay in, let's say, let's accept the least restrictive study in that situation rather than the most restrictive and start doing a favor for our citizens. DNR won't care because that sentence isn't even in the DNR model, it didn't even, it didn't even land there. What do you think? There's two places that I found that, and it's both places are not in the DNR model, it's added into the Dodge County model, and I think Dodge County should drop, kick it out, that's what I think.
Do we change anything, do we have to, do they have to get the DNR to approve?
Once it's approved by the county board, it still goes back to DNR. That particular sentence has been in the floodplain ordinance since two thousand, it was approved by the county board that way.
I'm saying let's unapprove it because it's not in the DNR's minimum standard regulation, you know, it's not there, so why ever even want to, or else if you want to keep the sentence in, just let's use the least restrictive study, because that's legitimate also, but we always go to the most restrictive, we always put pressure and regulation on people. I think we need to stop doing that, I mean, the Parks Department is trying to draw people into Dodge County hoping they want to live here, and then that's on one side of the land, Parks Department, and then on the other side, we're trying to restrict these people after they get here and make it harder on them. I think we need to start reversing that trend a little bit, and we had a comment about that up front here, too. So maybe we should start listening, you know? And if we wanted to make a change, how would we go about it here? I know I've been on the board two years, so I've never been through this exactly, do we make a motion to make a change here, is that helpful, or do we just agree to it, or how does that work here?
You can make a, right, to make a motion to modify anything in there, because it doesn't affect, affect what our minimum requirements are.
I mean, I'll make a motion to modify that sentence to say if there's two, if there's more than one map or revision referenced, the less, least restrictive or the lesser restrictive information shall apply. That's what I believe I'll see.
The least?
The lesser of the two, I mean, I don't want the most restrictive, if there's two studies or whatever is involved here, let's go according to the least restrictive of the two.
So change the word most to least?
Yes, that's what I would make a motion to do.
Can we just change it, or, I mean, if we make a motion, does it have to get rewritten and, or?
The modified version, we're going to come forward, change anything to the ordinance at this point.
I just think that would be pro-Dodge County citizens, since the DNR doesn't even require that whole sentence anymore. And that goes a little bit further, it's also in point, parenthesis two, official maps and revisions, just after that, that sentence is in there again, and it's not required by the DNR. So I would say, my motion would be to change that in both places, because they're identical.
Is there anyone else, Joe?
Where's the second one?
It's after parenthesis three, one point five, parenthesis two, sorry, and it's in the yellow there, at the end of the yellow section, you see that same stuff.
See that one, right? It's still, I mean, it's the most, it's not even at all, so we just go with whatever is approved.
They're both approved.
Right.
But what is, they're different, that's the point they're trying to do here, is that there's two different studies and they're both approved studies, they're saying go to the most restrictive, and I say let's go the other way, let's go to the least restrictive of the two.
We're changing, I want to say least, how about lesser restrictive?
Well, usually the second map comes in because they have more floodplain study information that is being considered at that time than what was originally done. So if they find new information that makes it even a more restrictive floodplain zoning ordinance, you can say, no, we're not going to approve it even though the study's which will have a more current.
That's all, that would get away from, you know, something that's done by, you know, new information, it's more restrictive because we have more, because we have new information.
So instead of restrictive, we can put the most current?
Most current revision. So it could go either way.
So it's, if they're changing it, if they're better, we're going to go to most current rather than go back to the most restrictive.
That's what he just said, no, instead of going the least restrictive, we're going to go with the most current, the most current.
Because in this, in this language, if it's, if the old one's more restrictive, you've still got to go by it.
Correct, yeah.
Not that I think the new one's going to be the, less restrictive after you did.
I, I like going with the most current.
Is that your motion?
So the first motion has to be acted on first?
Yeah, or modified. There was no second?
Okay.
Fifty percent difference, so then if we want another motion, we can do that.
I'll make a motion to change it from most restrictive to most current information shall apply.
I'll say that.
Okay, so motion's been made by Mary, seconded by Dale.
In both places then?
In both places. Change it to say, "If more than one map or revision is referenced, the most current information shall apply." Okay, Dan?
Yep.
Did you hear?
What?
I said, did you hear it? I said, so we're going to change it from, "If more than one map or revision is referenced, the most current information shall apply."
It's unfair.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll call the vote, all in favor of changing that revision. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so change the word restrictive to current in both places.
In parenthesis eight, as we continue in that section, parenthesis eight, parenthesis B, "This ordinance is not intended to repeal, abrogate, or impair any existing deed, restrictions, covenants, or easements." Then it says, "If this ordinance imposes greater restrictions, the provisions of this ordinance shall prevail." That's sort of the same idea, it's not intended to, but if it happens, it will do, is that what it's saying there?
No, it's saying that if there's any other ordinances that are more restrictive, you have to comply with the more restrictive ordinance. So the floodplain ordinance doesn't supersede ordinances adopted under fifty-nine sixty-nine with the lines, so you have to go with the more restrictive ordinance.
Okay.
Unless it's stated in the statutes.
And then I was wondering about parenthesis eleven, separability. Anytime I see a separability clause in any document, I go, whoop, there's something going on in here, because that's, that is giving our permission to violate constitutional rights one way or another, and if somebody wants to contest it, they have to go at it one at a time if there's even more. I was wondering if we could just get rid of the separability clause.
That's in there because of case law.
Case law?
I mean, if they went through and found two words wrong in the ordinance, they can say, "That sentence is unconstitutional," but it doesn't get rid of the entire ordinance, it just gets rid of that one or two sentences, so it's allowed, so a lot of the ordinance to remain in effect if only one small portion is not constitutional.
Okay. I think we just have to raise our awareness of constitutionality of things, because we did take notes of office, because we sort of always leave that, at that meeting the first time we take it sometimes. So if something is in the DNR model that means we're required to have it in our ordinance, then we cannot digress from that, then?
That would be the minimum, either the minimum state or the federal standard.
Okay.
If case, yes.
So they're really steering the ship here, I see. The DNR has a lot of, sorry. Where would be a place, when it comes to doing hydraulic studies and things like that that are, that are required for certain things, where would be the place to not place that whole burden for that study on, on the resident if, if it really seems to be unfair, is there, is there, what, what, where would that change be made? Because right now?
Technically, it's a field decision.
Field decision, okay.
That's the minimum information that the state requires if there's some A area.
I thought the optional things, Act one seventy-five, which was mentioned here about you dig out ditches and where do you put the dirt, one of these, I believe, if I remember you saying it, Joe, is that you can put it on the land right by the ditch if it's in the drainage district, is that what you said, Joe?
Correct, that was under one point five A and B.
Right, so that concern that was made by Mr. Hildendorf would actually be solid by that being here then?
Only if it's in, that exemption is only for the farm drainage, that's in the drainage district.
In a drainage district, yeah.
Yes.
I noticed there was a lot of things added here, so, so they did their homework already. Oh, one last thing, section nine at the end, I believe is where it is, section nine. Our, yes, section nine point two and nine point three. This is really an area where I think we are really being hired upon our citizens. When I read this, it reads like someone who violated a criminal statute in the state. That's how it reads. It's nine point two and nine point three. It goes almost two full pages. And what's interesting is none of these things are in the DNR's minimum standards, nor is it in the state statutes. None of these companies, enforcement powers, none of these things are in there. And I think since this is just a civil matter, I mean, enforcement procedures, everything is so delineated, so precision, and it's just, I think, overbearing. Because it's not even in the DNR model and it's not in the state statute that governs floodplain ordinances. This is what would be considered something that you would have in for criminal procedures, not civil procedures.
The enforcement and penalty section that you're referring to is the same in all six ordinances that we enforce throughout the county. It was approved in two thousand by the county board. It was supported by the corporation council. They want specific steps that we need to take when there is violation. So if you want to change those, the, probably the best avenue would be to go to the county board and change them in all six ordinances because they're the same in all six ordinances. That's a procedure that the county board approved and the corp council supported.
Did they approve that for all six at the same time?
No, as the ordinances were updated, they were, both sections were put in there, so it's consistent. So if you're getting a violation under the floodplain ordinance, you have to go through the same procedure as if you violated the land use code or the airport ordinance or the shoreline ordinance. So you don't have different ways of enforcing that or breaking them through the court. Depending on what ordinance you're in.
Well, maybe it's time for Dodge County to start reversing that move that happened back then because it's way overbearing.
What would you recommend for enforcing the ordinances then?
I would just say, use the DNR language and the state statute language and follow it. I mean, it has to be somewhere in there. I didn't go look what they said. But I did see that the state says fifty dollars per violation. Here we have fifty to five hundred dollars. I mean, we have ramped this up compared to what the state is saying should we happen here.
So would the DNR or the state come and enforce it or would that be up to the county to enforce it?
We are required to enforce our ordinance.
The state statute says it goes to your county lawyer. But it has none of this in there, or the DNR has none of this in there, it just references that state statute.
So is this something that you have to go through the corporation council and get up?
Well, this is probably written by corp counsel and how to be able to enforce.
That if you wanted to change it?
From a legal standpoint.
You would have to go through the corp council to get a whole new resolution that to get this part changed for all?
They didn't want it changed at the same time first time. It's just as they came up to it, so. I just think we're doing a disservice to our citizens when we put this kind of stuff together because we are whipping and cracking the whip then. They're not criminals. This is not a criminal thing here and that's basically what's happening. Because we're treating our residents by criminals or passing these laws in Dodge County that point at that so strongly. And I won't do anything with it. I'll just express my extreme dissatisfaction with it. I don't believe it belongs in here. I don't believe it belongs in any of our county ordinances. It's criminal language. It's criminal procedure language. It's not civil procedure language. I don't believe that. What can I say? I'm not a lawyer. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because I just think it's terrible that we we direct this kind of stuff at our citizens.
I, I get what you're saying, but I also think that you have to have a rule that states if you don't follow, this is what can, it's not saying that this is what will. It's this is what can happen if you don't follow those.
So you think that that's not anywhere else in the state statutes? Under chapter fifty-nine, Tony? I believe it is.
Well, do you want to go through my item and point out what?
I haven't had time to go through it.
With me?
My issue is that it's there in the first place because the DNR doesn't say it has to be there. And the state of Wisconsin doesn't say it has to be there in their floodplain ordinance.
But for instance, this is the first provision, nine point two one, is the person's authorized to seek relief. So it allows, in case of any violation, the county, county board, board adjustment, the land use administrator, the committee, or any property owner affected by a violation to be able to institute appropriate action.
Which is probably.
To the neighbors.
Right, but that's probably in there already somewhere in the state statute. I'd say we're reinventing something and making it tougher, is what I, that's what it reads like to me. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If we want to encourage people to love Dodge County, we have to start acting like we want them to love Dodge County. I hear from lawyers, I hear from surveyors, I hear from citizens, I hear from other officials in towns, I hear from a lot of people and it's never wild Dodge County. It's really, it's reading me, it's like, never, it never happens. They kind of say, well, we just have to tolerate this, but this is coming from Dodge County. We have to tolerate that because that's coming from Dodge County. How are we going to change it if we don't start saying, what are we doing here? So this is the kind of thing I just want us to be thinking about. And this is just one department here. Who knows what's happening somewhere else? I mean, it's a lot. And I don't mean to make a late meeting just because of this, but I think if we want to promote Dodge County as the place where you can enjoy your living and life, then we better start making it look like that's what we want them to do. But I have no time to try to work all the things, go through a big major deal to make changes. I have no time for that. But somebody had time to put it in there, that I can see.
But your change would have to, the corp council would change it, just make sure it stays.
Proudly.
Because this is, this is basically your recommendation.
Corp.
And the county board passed it.
It was approved in two thousand.
And there's no change in this one?
No, there was no color, so I figured somebody approved it and said, oh, what I had been. So that's twenty-seven years ago. It's shocking that they did that back then.
There, there needs to be a mechanism to be able to enforce the rules. Otherwise, we have voluntary compliance.
The mechanism, right, no, the mechanism is in the state statute really. And it isn't as severe as this mechanism, that's my point. So. All right, I will, I find time to do that. Way back, you want it?
If recommendation of the corp comes, I.
Okay. What do you think, Ben? Should I go and see if I can reverse it?
Doesn't hurt to talk.
But, but I do believe that to avoid that all of them get changed.
Well, I would agree, no doubt, yeah.
Because you're gonna, it's gonna be one way for this ordinance and one way for all the other ordinances and that's not we need reform to be.
Right, what do you think, Dale?
Well, I, personally, I have issues with some wetland violations. When you have to abide by the county's restrictions, you have to abide by the army corps of engineers restrictions, you have to abide by the DNR restrictions, and then you got to also abide by the NRCS restrictions. And if any one of the four don't meet, you're out. You couldn't comply with all three, but you have to do all four.
That's another issue.
Yeah, it's another issue. It's bothered me for years.
But what about this issue? What do you think?
Look at it. I'd need us to know if it's ever been enforced.
What, the five hundred dollars? All our, all our violations go through that process?
They're prison in the county jail for six months if that's ever happened?
If they.
And I don't think we'd send anyone to jail. The numbers are very, very small to get to that point where we go to, when we actually, we try to get compliance before doing anything with court. But we have to have some kind of leverage that they just keep, you know.
They just bound it.
You know, we have to enforce the ordinance and we have to have mechanisms to be able to do that. And that's what the corp council has apparently brought forward in the past, because this is what I think we should, they need, but maybe there is other language that would accomplish that.
Like the state language you're saying.
All right.
But I, I still think, even if it's in here some other place from the state or wherever, there needs to be a section for Dodge County to reiterate that these are the steps that Dodge County will take as outlined by the state or by the DNR or by whoever. Because if it says that some people can take it way overboard if the DNR says it, what gives Dodge County the right to enforce it?
Chapter fifty-nine.
Or, well.
It's a state statute for Dodge County.
So do we have to hold off on it until it lines or we can?
No, it has to be amended at that time. Nothing that's going to hold anything off right now.
So are we ready to?
I have no more concerns.
Close the public hearing and go on to the floor?
Sure.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. I close the public hearing and listen to what you want to block.
The proposed amendment correct the error or the challenge of changing condition to train our facts?
Yes.
The proposed amendment consistent with Dodge County comprehensive plan and the stated purposes of these ordinance.
Yes.
The proposed amendment protect the health, safety, or general welfare of the general public?
Yes.
The proposed amendment result in significant adverse effects on the natural environment, including air, water, stormwater management, quantizing vegetation.
No.
Does the Department of Natural Resources provide a regulation regarding the proposed amendments?
Not the second edition.
Does we believe that following the actual provisions, exceptions should be made within the text of Dodge County floodplain zoning ordinance? So that exemption was what Dan had brought up. It allows an exemption for a for the drainage district to be exempt that would allow them to put the fills within the floodplain area. It comes from the drainage ditch.
There was two of them, right?
Right, both of those are the same, or regulate the same things.
Do you want to guess or no?
A and A.
I would like to see the, what do they call that again though? What's it, what's the language in there?
Exemption.
Exemption, yeah. I would like to see that included, exemption included to benefit the farmers. That would be my.
Yes.
Page twenty-nine to thirty-two, section one, page four.
These provisions are adopted into the ordinance, meaning it could allow an existing structure to remain, yes.
Yes, because otherwise it would have been by the fifty percent.
I'd say it's okay to at least give the owner a choice in what he wants to do with that building.
Do you want to change the meeting? Are we being able to petition this report? Question would be yes, because he's modifying, not by that one.
We have two spots.
Those two terms.
So, yes. And you should do two changes and?
One point five parenthesis two, there's.
One point, yeah.
There's two spots in the additions, in the amendment. Two separate.
Under one point five general provisions, two spots.
Except for current.
Right.
Yep.
Does proposed amendment contain sufficient information necessary to make a decision?
Yes. I will make a motion to submit a favorable recommendation to the county board's supervisors on the code amendment as modified.
Be as modified?
As modified. Wait a second. Okay, I have a motion by Mary in a second by Dale. If there are no further questions, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have three guesses, one and one answer. Motion is carried. On the basis of the above findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the record for this matter, the committee shall provide a favorable recommendation to the county board on the code amendment as modified.
Right.
An ordinance shall also be drafted in factuating recommendation of the committee and said code amendment shall be submitted to the board. The next thing is the heart system.
Heart plan. We have the support resolution for our five-year heart plan adoption. We've been talking about for the last nine months, a little bit. So just looking for support, support, resolution for county board and number.
I gave them that one time to talk through it, so. I did my part.
So you want some motion?
There's a, there should have. You have the rest of the jacket, rest of the gym?
So. I'll make a motion to down.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mary, seconded by Ben. There are no questions. Motion has been made by Mary, seconded by Ben. There are no questions. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? Here.
Alright, last one. They're waiting for it. Pelican path resolution as well. This is a follow-up from a couple meetings ago when we had this group here making a presentation. They'd asked for support resolution to go to county board. Can we discuss this a little bit yet or not? And yes, and I do have... And on my memo for resolution, pointed out that it's been made aware of some concerns with the Rodden Gun Club adjacent to it. There's letter, letters, some texts from them expressing that. Representatives are here from that group. And I want to the chair of how do you want to proceed and discuss.
Does the committee have any problem with listening to them?
I want to hear what the public thinks. That's what we're here for.
So, that is from the Houston Road Gun Club?
Correct. Can I step up? Mind if I sit down?
You can sit if you would like.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
You've been sitting all night. You've been sitting all night.
My name is Bob Trigwell. I'm the treasurer for the Houston Road Rodding Gun Club. Jeff Zamorski is also here. He is the president of the Houston Road Rodding Gun Club. Thank you for letting me speak to you guys. Now, I understand that this is the resolution that you want to pass to the board. I'm asking you to please hold back on that. I submitted two letters. One was back in May twenty-second. That was after having conversation with Daniel Schmidt, project manager for MSI Professional Services who's setting up the Pelican Path Trail. I've been talking to him. The path would be on the south side of Highway sixty. The path goes right along the north side of the Houston Road Rodding Gun Club, which is on the south side of Highway sixty, east of County Road E. Now, the Houston Road Rodding Gun Club's been in existence since eighteen ninety. Vital member of the Houston Road Community. Give back to the community. We support the community. We have veterans, hunts, learn to hunt, safety, dog training events. And we also run a trap league, which is located with fixed traps just to the, on the south side of Highway sixty, just to the east, right at this path goal. Besides having the trap league, we have active hunting. The field's there, birds. Now, like I said, that's been going on since the eighteen nineties. Our main concern with this now is that people are not familiar with hunting and tracking and trashing. Are not gonna understand how this club operates. One, it's not really a... It's a safety concern since the traps are right there. So I expressed these concerns in the letter. Dan, talked to Dan. He said he would immediately forward it to the committee, the path committee. Haven't heard anything back from them until last week after I submitted the second letter on August twenty-fourth. Since that time, since the first letter, I've talked to the Dodge County Conservation Congress and they are not in support of this. Talked to the Houston Road Town chairman. And he told me he was in support of it. We discussed it and he goes, "I didn't know they were gonna ride alongside the hunting club. I thought they were starting at the library and running from there." So when he gave his support, it was at a different route. Now, my main concern is that if this is passed on for approval, it's the first nail in the coffin for the Houston Road Rodding Gun Club. The hunting and shooting heritage throughout Dodge County is very strong, as you all know. But it's also under attack. This is... This will be the first nail in their coffin, closing it. Having said that, I did get a phone call finally last week from the Pelican Path Committee. They're gonna meet with Jeff, the president, myself, their Maro, to discuss this. So I'm asking that this be tabled until we can try to mediate some kind of resolution for the issue. Because once it's passed to the board for approval, well, that's just more tightening around our neck with the role. And then there's only a coming back from it. I don't know how long you would pass it, put it on, for table it. But I've had emails from Dale. If we're gonna come to a resolution, that's fine. If we don't come to a resolution, notify you of that also, that's only fair. And then you guys have to take your vote. That's... I'm asking for it to be tabled for time being. Any questions of me?
No questions of you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this before we make a decision?
And there is one more meeting before the board, September. So, still have another meeting before...
Would this have to be July?
September.
You're reading it out?
September eleventh would be the next committee meeting. Still waiting on the September board meeting. And I don't know if it's critical that the... It's even at September board meeting, but... Jerry, address that.
Jerry Shaw, we're on the head. Chairman of the Pelican Path Trail Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a hunter, a Rodden Gun Club member. I'm just close to another one, so I'm also Rodden Gun Club's. Bike trails and gun clubs can coexist. For example, a new state trail has a range next to it with a wall between and they operate safely together. Also, there's cyclists on Highway sixty right now and have been for many years. They're operating safely next to the Rodden Gun Club. So, this is not a major change because the trail will be on the south side of Highway sixty. And part of the property ability study in the Safe Professional Services, they recommend a wall between the trail and the Rodden Gun Club. So I think that would mitigate the safety concerns of the Rodden Gun Club. So we've got cyclists on sixty now. We've got a wall between us, so I think that addresses the concern.
What do you think?
I was looking at the whole thing last night and aside from... I didn't know anything about the Rodden Gun Club stuff here, but when I came here tonight, I said, "I really am not real comfortable with this." I don't think we should encourage more people to come around Highway sixty and more people to ride their bikes or walk, even if it's off the beaten trail a little bit. I just think there has to be a different way to get around that's more scenic even than going down Highway sixty. I'm sorry. So I... Last night I looked at it all and I said, "No, I don't think this is a good idea." That's just my gut feeling. I don't care how much money people throw at it. I just don't think it's a good idea to be trying to be around Highway sixty to do a bike path that's supposed to be quiet and nature-loving and safe and whatever. I just think if there could be something better in Dodge County, we're still big. We don't have to go to Houston Road School. The kids aren't gonna go down there and go to school. That's ridiculous. That's not gonna happen.
It's a transportation corridor, so it's... Granted, it's not gonna be scenic like the class.
No, but it was presented as we're connecting the school and kids to more trails. And I go, "There has to be a better way to do it." I don't... I think common sense should prevail here and say, "Not Highway sixty. I mean, they just fixed it up now again." And it's getting busier and busier all the time. I just can't see it. I say, nothing against you personally, nothing against anything personally. It's just... It's my gut reaction. I go, "No, this doesn't seem right."
So everyone's on the same page. I think we should table it.
Honestly, I feel that we should table it, that you guys can have a little time to try and work together to come up with a comparable solution. What do you think?
I would prefer to table it as sensible. Can I ask me one comment, please?
We may make one.
People are cycling right down Highway sixty now.
I don't think it's very smart.
I don't think so either. Wouldn't it be safer to get them off the trail?
No, but you're gonna encourage more people to come around there. You just want kids to walk and you want people to walk. And it's like, if you really want people to enjoy nature, get them out in nature. Don't get them by a state highway that's getting busier and busier and busier all the time.
There's one right next to Highway twenty-six.
That's fine. That's not what's up to speed here. I just...
Well, I just didn't know yet where the fact that they're riding on Highway sixty now.
Yeah, and then...
We're looking at a safety aspect there because they're gonna continue to ride on Highway sixty where this path is there or not. And I feel it will bring more people into Dodge County. Well, I guess that's all I had to say. I don't know if you know this or not. And we're supposed to be tomorrow? You are? Yeah, I'm the guy. I'm John. I don't know when he called you.
Yeah, I pulled up to DePere in twenty-one and there are bike paths. I mean, they're off, but it's along and down by some herd, digging into one fifty-one. The bike paths are off, but they're along.
Unfortunately, you're limited to corridors that exist without going into, you know, mine of farmland. See, there are different corridors. So you get the utility corridors, railroad corridors, highway corridors, you know, primary linear potential. So, you know, I know that they, there were four road potentials to look at. Route B on the south side was identified as the preferred option. I guess in my mind, there's still a lot of issues with all the road options.
Route A's on Highway sixty.
Right. You've got that now at that location in a way.
With the trail.
With the well use connecting down into climate. So, from that standpoint, it's actually a good spot because it's already there, already established. But if there's more there, there might be some additional signage or something that could address that.
And should we table it during making the motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to table it.
And I'm the second bit. Do you have any more to say on it? Otherwise, I'll call the vote.
You do have to table it to a specific time?
Our next meeting is September eleventh.
The next meeting?
No. Well, that would make it, then it wouldn't be able to hit the board in September.
September eleventh, that's still making...
September, but he said...
Yeah. Oh.
So order the two options.
Yeah. If we do the eleventh, so is that, will that give you guys enough?
I'm not confident that it's gonna take some back and forth and back and forth. And I'm not sure September eleventh is going to be dual.
So, how long?
And I'm sorry to say this, I got a town board meeting on September eleventh.
Okay, so we will put it back. We will table it to September eleventh or the twenty-fifth. But if it has to go to the twenty-fifth, it will not go before the board until October.
Okay.
Do you have any issues with timing wise? Is there a grant or something that you need to have?
There are missing several great applications.
So September is an important time. I don't know. Table it to two days.
That's people. That's people.
Table it to a certain time. I don't think it can be just one of these.
But, okay, there's things...
I know, I know, I know. What's wrong? So, you know, this is a support resolution. I don't think we put in there anything about specific route, but... Yeah, we didn't identify any specific route.
So can we give them the support of the resolution pending an agreement between the Rodden Gun Club and...
Certainly, we don't need to wait till we know what we're dealing with here, I think. We should deal with facts. The support is basically telling them, "You built the trail, we're exempted from the county facility." So that's gonna mean that they'll have to address it with adjacent landowners. There's a lot of under hoops. And it might end up being parts of different routes than in the final, final route.
Can I say one thing before we move forward? As I'm listening to you talk, up until this moment, there was no interaction. Once you go ahead with the, "We support it," my greatest fear is the interaction that we have now is gonna get pulled back because now the path committee has what they're working to have.
Maybe this is a lot of February twenty-fifth.
Do we have to... Can we just say that it's postponed until an agreement has been reached? And if no agreement is reached, are we going to support it?
Excuse me, if I may. We're not the only landowner concerned about this trail. So I think it's not just an agreement between us and the Pelican Path group. It's all the landowners.
I'd say then the rest of them need to be a part of your meeting whenever that's happening. Because I don't wanna go over this multiple.
I agree.
I agree. Yeah.
But we're not involved in the process and I guess in my mind, it's supportive of the concept of the trail. There's a lot of issues that still need to be worked out, whatever route it is. But they need, the county to say, "Okay, if you're able to pull this off, we'll accept it as a county facility."
Well, I understand. I just wanna make sure we make a decision.
So if we get bogged down in the details of exactly identifying the route right now without saying, you know, "Go ahead and start looking at it further," it'll never happen.
Right, but if we send this resolution to the board on September and all these questions are still up there too, it's not gonna pass anyhow.
Can they apply for grants if they don't have any route?
So what they're looking for is some assurances that the county, if they build it, that the county will accept it and take care of it long-term. And a lot of the granters will need that information, will want to know that they're giving it something that's not gonna fall apart or not be cared for in the future.
So, resolution is already written.
It can change, but that was what we, you know, what they had asked for and then what things that I had concerns with.
Okay, so can we bring it back at the next meeting, the eleventh? Because that will get in time for the county board? And at that time...
And you can decide.
We can decide whether or not we want to send it forward even if a route hasn't. But that we're saying we give them their, our support, that they can start flying. And we don't really, we don't have to okay the route.
We're...
We just have to okay that we'll maintain it.
Once it's built, turn over the document.
Which one is ready? Answers before we pass it.
So is this being built on state land then? Or is it being built on private property at the trail?
On state, well, it's along State Highway sixty. That's what the route proposed is. Again, it could change, but the route that was identified was on the long Highway sixty. I believe, most of it's all within the right of way of the highway. There are probably some locations where they'll need easements, permanent easements, or graded easements during construction, and those are kind of typical, typical things in there. So, there are probably, and I don't have the details, I haven't been close enough, but there are probably individual property owners that they will need to secure easements from.
And the state DOT vote is already on board?
State DOT has reviewed this and has, as much as they can say okay right now, they have, and that's my understanding. They've been, they've been involved, or at least consulted in the process of doing the rest.
So, we already have a motion postponed.
To September eleventh.
To September eleventh, at that time, we can decide, even if they haven't reached an agreement, that we want to send it forward to the board, that we give our support. We're not okaying a route, right? So, I guess we have to add a motion in a second. Unless there's any other questions, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of tabling it to the eleventh?
Aye.
I'm opposed, so we will table it. That was in September eleven. And then if, if an agreement has been reached, please let us know while.
Right, should we go through Bill?
Yeah, let me know.
Okay. How's he bill up to speed on any developments, either one way or the other?
All right.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, a motion will begin from the August fourteenth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Dale. If there's no additions or corrections, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, aye, opposed, this being. No committee member reports in, anything else, Bill? No extra proceedings?
That's okay.
Next meeting is September eleven. Are there any public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you everyone. By order of the chair, I will call this meeting adjourned at nine-thirty.